Doors have that.
Making measurements.
Welcome, everybody, to the June fourth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting. We're meeting today on Wednesday because we have the public hearing held by the Executive Committee after this meeting this afternoon. So we appreciate everybody making the accommodations and a special thank you to Finance for getting payroll all complete so that we could meet on this day. So with that, I'd ask everyone to rise and Commissioner Tom Morello, why don't you lead us in the College of Legends today?
What do you lead it to the flag of the United States of America and through the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
So for attendance here in the Board of Commissioners room, there's myself, Commissioner Foyle, Commissioner Tom Morello, and Commissioner Godu. Also in the room, you have Leila Matilla, Jude Gates, Chuck Nickerson, Jim Child, John Conan, Jason Henry, and Allison McLaughlin. Over in Zoom land, I see Erin Coker, Chuck Maseas, our sheriff, and there's someone, I see an elbow. I don't know if that's Major Bashaw or... Yes, we're gonna get thumbs up. So we see Major Bashaw's elbow. With that, we can move right to the consent agenda and with respect, we have the May eighth meeting minutes for approval.
We make a motion to approve the May eighth, two thousand forty-five public hearing minutes and non-public minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Thank you, Leila. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have Agency Nursing Staff Report. It appears we're fairly, what I can see is that we've been fairly level. We're still canceling, you know, we're still using travelers, but we've also canceled a number of contracts for various reasons. So and we're, there's a number of agencies we're not using. So overall, it seems like we're still trending in the right direction. Looks like we have fifty-nine individuals from agency. Clearly, that number has decreased over time.
Are we less than thirty percent agency yet?
I don't believe we're right where they are yet.
We're not quite.
And I guess for clarification to the future, are you looking in regards to total staff or in regards to nursing? Specifically, because that'll skew the.
Well, nursing and L and A, so you consider that altogether?
We, I just, when I calculated, I've been doing it off of the nursing department employees. But I just wanted to clarify, because if we added in like the environmental services and some of the others, it would skew the number. So I have not calculated it in the last month or so. Last time I did, it had dropped, but it was not at thirty.
I think the clearest view of that that people like to hear is that we have, we were at sixty percent agency and forty percent
We were high.
Staff and we're just the opposite, seventy percent staff, right?
It's not quite seventy.
Okay, that was the number.
Last summer around that, we were over sixty percent, it was closer to seventy percent agency to house staff. Around December, it flipped in favor to more, the percentage being more in our favor. But I don't believe we hit the seventy percent our staff unless we factor in the ancillary departments and not the metrics in which you're looking for.
Okay. That's gonna give us a dollar value too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, let's move on to the June sixth, two thousand twenty-five payroll.
We make a motion to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, five hundred, four thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and forty-seven cents for the period ending May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion?
Lady Chuck?
Yeah, thank you, Chuck, for your team for getting it done so quickly.
So a little bumpy, but better.
But it's also really consistent with what we've been seeing for payroll expenses, so that's nice. Okay, anything else? Commissioner Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we have Commissioners' Updates. Would you like to start, Commissioner?
Sure, I could start. I had conversations with Michael Carter from Eversource, he's the VP of Government Relations, and also had conversations with, he, Mike, shared the information, which we all got in a memo, of how Eversource was taking care of business and helping us out, bringing in the right equipment, not charging us any extra money. And they seem committed to hitting our deadline of the end of the fiscal years, and that's fantastic. Mike was excellent to speak with and to explain our situation. And he obviously brought it to the team and made something happen. I also spoke with the Commissioner of Energy, Jared Chacon, well, maybe not pronouncing his name correctly. But he also had conversations with Eversource to encourage them to participate. So I think lobbying efforts were paid off. And I was pleased to see that all that come in this morning.
And I think, yeah, so I mean, what, what I think occurred, which was really effective, which is we really made efforts on many different fronts, and that's thank you to, obviously, your efforts.
But, yeah, I wasn't alone in that. I just had a little piece.
But every piece is a, you know, a piece of the puzzle to contribute in to the count, to the tune of three million dollars of taxpayer dollars. So Jude, your team, Chuck, James Hasselbeck from Revision was instrumental in this. Really, the team at Revision was just outstanding advocates on our behalf, really. And I think it's like teamwork makes the dream work. In this case, the dream is three million dollars of taxpayer dollars. So thank you to you and everybody else and for their contributions to really make a big difference.
So that's all I have.
Yep. At the last hour and a half of jail. Figure it out again.
Most likely, they'll let you out.
Everywhere you went would really run, run well. And Major, John, John, the major brought me around to different places. I don't know how they know how to get in and out of the doors. The doors and doors and doors, but it's amazing. And we signed off a couple of little notes. I noticed the emergency light that was on that wasn't supposed to be on when the power was on. That's okay. I noticed electrical problem more than I did people hanging from that roof or anything like that. I didn't hang it, so we said.
You focused on the, on the electrical. I focused on the sleeping conditions.
I just did not, not. But it is, I mean, you know, you can downstairs and then go all the way to the different blocks and then even go outside. It's, there's a lot of work over there that's going on. Went in the infirmary, talked to them about what they can do, limitation, restrictions, and what would render something to have to leave the building. I met the teacher, I met the librarian, I met, I met them all. So I could have spent more time and all of a sudden we looked, I said, John, figure out how to get me out of here, because I have to be in a meeting and.
You might call down, you jump out the door, I gotta go.
But it's, there's a lot of moving parts. You don't realize it till you really get into it. But other than that, it was good, signed off, and unhappy but enough to go back when I leave yet.
Six months.
Six months. It's every six months.
Every six months.
Every six months.
Yeah, when I left.
One of the Commissioners has to go every six months.
Yeah, when I left there, I said to myself, I'm glad I listened to my parents a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
But that's all signed, so I'm glad with that, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, let's move on to, we have the Department of Corrections, the Department Van Replacement Discussion and Approval. So maybe we can open it up for, should we open it up for discussion first and then we can move on to the motion? So Superintendent Henry, do you want to speak a little?
Sure. So last week, you know, I wanted to come up with something, so I had some backing data. Chuck was kind of to send me the state contract of what it'd be if you got a new van, so at least we have something to go off of. That's why I'm asking to move the fifty-seven thousand dollars over. Not anticipating spending fifty thousand dollars, fifty-seven thousand dollars on that. Jude and Jimmy have been great, reaching out, and Commissioner Godu had a contact too. And they're reaching out, trying to find a used van, we don't need a new van, in a much lower price range. But so we're bringing it forward, so at least we have the transfer money over and encumber it as we go through the process of trying to find a replacement van.
Okay, so what I noticed is that there's, there are a bunch of, Chuck sent over a bunch of options, state van, passenger vans. And so there's a fairly significant range in prices, though it looks like the less expensive one was in relation to a five to seven versus a twelve. And so are you focused on the twelve passenger versus?
I look at ten, but that's just what the state has, so we, and Chuck, we're just trying to guess.
We've been focusing on the times when Jimmy's been working.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's different than some of the, this is the state. So.
There's a big difference between all-wheel drive and two-wheel drive as well. The all-wheel drive, ten passenger, it pushes you up near seventy.
And we're not looking for that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're not looking for that.
Just kind of trying to get a broad range of what's available everywhere. He does have a column to Commissioner Godu's contact as well. We don't have those numbers just yet, but.
And so the thought behind it, like, so there was some discussion about lease versus buy. And it seems like with this approval for the line item transfer, you're going in the direction of purchase versus lease.
That's Chuck's recommendation to buy, but we could go lease, I wish you guys would. It'd just be a different amount to a different line. Yeah.
I think in general, I'm in favor of transferring the money, but we still need to come up with the right, the dollar amount and the searching, making a comprehensive search. And, you know, we want to save money. A used vehicle for what we're using here is probably going to do just right. So I trust them to find something that's a good deal.
And I apologize, this came again last minute because the van was not going to be able to pass inspection. Would have liked to transfer money earlier, figure this out. But since this is the last week, to kind of put money over and encumber it, did that kind of stuff, that's why I had to bring it forward now. And again, it needs no obligation, they have to purchase a vehicle or lease a vehicle.
It's right back to the, correct.
Right.
So I just.
Whatever doesn't get used is still going back into fund balance, no matter what. But we just want to earmark it essentially.
You're just budgeting a lot, you somehow, like you and I talked today, maybe twenty to thirty thousand for the new one.
Whatever, yeah, I mean, Jimmy's been really working on it most. He's been calling to a lot of places and trying to find. And he also, since he takes care of the vehicles, I was looking a little older. He wants a little newer because of less work on it, so I'm staying, I stay out of that because he's the one that has to work on these vehicles.
He also can probably analyze it better.
Yeah.
It's his job.
Yeah, right.
I'm looking strictly at price, going, oh, that's, that's pretty good. It's pretty cheap, it's like twenty-one.
He's looking at dry rod.
Yes, yeah, he's, he's.
I have a minivan with two hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it that I'm looking to sell. Cheap.
He probably has what some truck might be.
Years to avoid as well.
Yeah, that there are certain years to avoid due to recall, or just some of the same issues.
Issues, right.
Transmission issues.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve a line and transfer request, the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars dated June seventeen, two thousand twenty-five, transferred from inmates at other facilities to equipment not expendable, as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
We next have a travel and training request approval for the Department of Corrections.
Motion to approve a travel and training request for four Department of Corrections employees, all to be determined later, I guess, to attend the New Hampshire Association of Counties Conference, to be held at the Omni Mount Washington Resort from Sunday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-five through Tuesday, November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, on estimated cost of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents, as recommended by the Superintendent of the Department of Corrections.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? Oh, two, two?
No.
Okay.
No.
Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next, we're moving on to facilities operations. We have a line item transfer request.
I'll make a motion to approve a line and transfer request, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars dated June second, two thousand twenty-five, transferring from the Department of Corrections Electricity to the Department of Corrections Purchase Services, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities, New Hampshire.
Second.
Discussion? Unforeseen maintenance, spur to the elevator and each one. Okay, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello, and I vote yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Finance Office Line Item Transfer Request.
A motion to approve a line and transfer request, the amount of seventeen thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, dated May thirty, two thousand twenty-five, transferring from borrowing expenses and legal to audit fees, as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Discussion? At least it means our legal line is low. But we have to do the audit. Well.
Yeah, we're having multiple single audit and work on two different fiscal year-end ones, you know, including preliminary work on the next.
Great. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Human Resources, a ratification of union, four-union contracts. So do you want to just do each individually since they're, thankfully?
That's right.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement, Schultzen, New Hampshire, R S A two seventy-three dash A, call and free between the County of Rockingham, New Hampshire, Rockingham County Rehabilitation Nursing Center, and State Employees Association, New Hampshire, Inc., S E I U Local nineteen eighty-four, effective July first, two thousand twenty-five, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight, continuing upon the pool, the cost items by the Rockingham County Convention.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next.
Approve the collective bargaining for Schultzen, New Hampshire, R S A two seventy-three dash A colon three, between Rockingham County, New Hampshire, and the Teepsis Local six thirty-three supervisory employees of the Rockingham County Department of Corrections, effective July first, two thousand twenty-five, through June thirty, two thousand twenty-eight, continuing upon the approval of the cost items by the Rockingham County Convention.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, on that, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next.
To approve the collective bargaining agreement to New Hampshire, R S A two seventy-three dash A colon three, between Rockingham County Sheriff's Office and the Teepsis Local six thirty-three of New Hampshire Deputy Sheriff's, effective July first, two thousand twenty-five, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight, continuing upon the approval of the cost items of the Rockingham County Convention.
Second. Discussion? I just, this is actually one contract I'm not going to support, and the basis is that what I noticed is that we have of fairly equitable increases across all the other bargaining units. This one is significantly, the rate increases are significantly more. And when I look at, you know, when we look at the budget considerations for the county as well as, you know, sort of the, trying to be that, that they, and where we have shortages, they don't have any, they're fully staffed. And so that suggests currently they're close to being at market, and their rate increases like significantly more than the other union. So.
Well, I would just, I would, I would just say that, you know, some of the other unions got memorialized amounts. This group did not get a memorialized amount. I think that not to supporters and, well, that's all I would say. I think some of the other groups got six, seven, over seven dollars memorialized amounts. And this group did not get anything. They did get substantial increases, but it's one of those, it's okay. That's my take on it.
I, I'm in support of this. I was the one that negotiated the contract. I, it was not that friendly the whole way through. I can tell you that it was a difficult negotiation. I was trying to keep expenses as low as possible, but they made a compelling case of what was market, to keep their employees, to keep all the deputies in good shape. I support it. I think it's a fair contract.
On the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello? Commissioners Godu?
Yes.
And I vote no. Two, one, motion carries. One more.
A motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement for Schultzen, New Hampshire, R S A two seventy-three, dash A colon three, between Rockingham County and the Teepsis Local six thirty-three of New Hampshire, Rockingham County Dispatch, effective July first, two thousand twenty-five, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight, continuing upon the approval of the cost items by the Rockingham County Convention.
Second.
Discussion? This union group also went up quite a bit, but I, what we have seen with dispatchers is there is a significant retention, recruitment and retention issue. So I, just as a parody to the other, I really support.
Yep, I understand your position.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello? And I vote yes. Moving on to Long-Term Care Services, we have a number of line item transfers. 'Tis the season for line item transfers as we approach the end of the big board in a timely manner. So we appreciate that it, just as a, that all the department heads are paying attention to timelines so we can get these all done and be in a good place before quarter. Commissioner Tom Morello, turn it over to you.
For approval line item transfer request, the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, dated June second, two thousand twenty-five, transferring from intermediate nursing care to assisted living meals, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Discussion? What we're seeing, though, is that the, our dietary contract is above what we expected. I know that there's been significant efforts to reduce, to like sort of try to slow that increase. A lot of effort in long-term care services to try to do that, but you still need to plan accordingly. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next.
Motion to approve a line and transfer request, the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars, dated May thirty, two thousand twenty-five, transferring from intermediate nursing care to bed assessment, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Discussion? This is actually a good transfer, a feel-good transfer, because it means that we're, we have more revenue than we expected. So that's a great thing, but as a result, just trying to get the budget right. Commissioner, anyone else? Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next.
Motion to approve a line and transfer request, the amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and six dollars, dated May thirty, two thousand twenty-five, transferring from intermediate nursing care to dietary services, contract as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Any discussion? Scene number one. Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello? And I vote yes. Finally.
Yeah, a motion to approve a line and transfer request, the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and eight dollars, dated May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, transferring from laundry equipment not expendable to E V S equipment not expendable, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Discussion?
If I may.
Sure.
So this was one of the items that with the savings that we had remaining somewhere, and so the washer, we're able to purchase so that it was able to be utilized in a format that would best serve the center from upkeep without adding additional stress to the staff as well. And it's just truly in the wrong bucket. Let's just go from laundry to E V S to purchase it.
Wrong laundry bucket.
Laundry, the environmental services, but it's the difference with the washer, especially where Jude's team was able to help support the dryer with having a foil. It allowed us to be able to do this and remove it from the upcoming budget as well.
That's great. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Tom Morello?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have the Lamphrey Healthcare Agreements approval, too.
I'll make a motion to approve Lamphrey Healthcare, Inc. Physician Services Agreements for Catherine Bergeron, M.D. and Ruth James, M.D., for a term of one year, beginning June first, two thousand twenty-five, with automatic renewals for successive one year. Terms and author is the chair to sign all this facility, documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Discussion?
We, so essentially, we've had a vacancy of, in our doctors team since prior to myself. We were able to successfully fill one of those positions, and we had a resignation, or retirement of a different provider, and means we're the doctors that will kind of round out the team so that we'll have the coverage fully that we typically have. So it's not a cost change, it's the changing of the.
Providers, yeah, change. And I assume we did the mutual indemnification. All right, on this, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello? And I vote yes.
Thank you.
We have the Register of Deeds Travel and Training Request Approval.
Motion to approve a travel and training request for two Registry of Needs staff, C S and B J V, to attend the New Hampshire Association of Counties Conference, to be held at the Omni Mount Washington Resort from Sunday, November ninth, two thousand twenty-five, through Tuesday, November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, an estimated cost of two thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars, as recommended by the Registry of Needs.
Second.
Discussion? Thank you. I guess, thank you to the department heads for getting these requests in so we can figure out where we land on the N H A C coverage.
I think that we've gotten everybody's requests. Are there any more pending requests for that particular conference that we're aware of? Of all departments, what is what they want?
If you think it's over, it ain't over.
Well.
It never over till the last week.
Except, but I do think that because there's such an effort to write all we determine, so they're, they're placeholding, even though the.
And I'm okay with that, that, you know, four people are coming from Corrections, you know, and they'll determine what that is. I'm wondering if there's going to be any more requests in addition, you know, bodies going to this.
So they could be, right, because.
It'll depend if one of the departments submits a award in, like, recipient throwing award. They probably want to send them for the award night and overnight.
Okay, but that might be the only exception at this point.
Before, also.
So we can calculate how many.
Like Department of Corrections, when there's, one of the, was a spot specifically for award receiving. So some of the departments.
I guess those three, three days, one, one night for, right, we will, we will put somebody.
Yeah.
I sent out the email alert to give everybody to the month of June, like, the June you had asked.
Those we had asked for that, yeah, great.
It all went out to everybody, and I also told them to think of recipients at the same time, because they're doing that, so.
All right, that's great, good. I know last year, we kept getting, they were dribbling in till, like you, like you said, Tom, the, the last week. And I didn't want to have to see that this time.
And I think that, yes, to the point where it says T B D, I think that should eliminate some of that.
Right, maybe the reason they weren't sending it in was because they didn't have a name yet.
Correct.
Right, so, okay.
On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Morello? I vote yes. Okay, we're swinging right into department head updates, and we'll start over in Zoom land. Sheriff Maseas, good afternoon.
Now? No, Black and Blue Report will see you at six o'clock.
Great, thank you. Okay, coming back into here. Let's see, Chuck, would you like to give us an update from Finance?
Sure. Well, I went to the County and State Finance Commission meeting yesterday and discussed some of the matters regarding Medicaid. Right now, it does appear on the federal level that there's also a potential threat to pro share from that end, and also Amquipp, because it could have kind of done something with the state's bed tax as well. They didn't so far, so.
So far, so safe.
Yes, on the state level, we are still okay as far as our pro share, but there are two counties whose private pay rates actually run between sixty percent and a hundred percent of the usual customary charge, so like the full cost.
Yeah.
And so those two counties are in danger of losing this amount of pro share. I think in one case, one is actually have a payback because of the prior year reconciliation, because pro share is your, basically, the federal share of the estimated current year Medicaid loss. And then it's plus or minus the prior year adjustment. Because now, you know, the state's done their preliminary destiny for the cost for, for the prior year, so they've got the exact number. So one county is.
The economy dash is lowering.
Okay, but we'll see what happens, because otherwise, I think with adjustment alone from prior year, they might pay back, actually. Their mind, yeah, their mind gets better. So we'll see what happens, but estimating current year pro share, I think it's going to be part of the. So we'll see what happens, but um, estimating current year pro share, I think it's going to be part of the maybe what's, I think DJ Jess is talking at the affiliate meeting for N H A C on Friday, so I might sit in to see what advanced info we might be getting, um. I'll let you talk about what it looks like the Medicaid rate is going to be going to.
Of that.
Good, so it's good news there.
It is great news.
Uh, yes, definitely good news. Um, and it'll feed into hopefully not having in the actual sense for twenty-six seventy of these. Um, even as much five dollars as what we have brought you before. So that's good news.
So if it's helpful to just share it now, essentially the preliminary rate um, for July first, or the standard Medicaid rate, Rockingham County is going from two, tentatively, two hundred and sixty-seven um, ninety-four cents to two ninety-one nineteen for twenty-three dollar.
Wow.
We are drastically higher in our increase than some of the others. Our N V S team has been doing a lot of work around education, capturing uh, to be able to capture that. It also sort of works in our benefit with all those outbreaks because we were able to capture more acuity.
Yeah.
Um, through that, but some counties actually are taking negative fits and ours is um.
Increasing.
Increasing in a great way.
How did we, what did we budget?
We budgeted for three percent reduction.
Yeah.
Because that's what the word was on back conquered was the three percent reduction, which the Senate has actually backed off.
But it's a three percent reduction off of our current rates because we had a rough estimate, so we took what our average rates are. Because your C M I window is always six months later. So we did it off of our current rate, not the income rate and another three percent reduction.
So that's a thirteen percent win.
Right, so we went for, so the, because it's over eight point three percent increase.
Yeah, I thought it was close to ten.
And then, and then we thought we're going to be losing three percent on current.
Right, so twelve, twelve percent win.
So we're not losing as much revenue.
No, we're, we're going to have an increase in revenue for the tune of.
You, you do a C M I and then it kind of every six months your rate changes. J J and the N V S team have spent a lot of time around the rates capturing, looking at those pieces. And uh, Rockingham is anticipating twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Tentatively, they can still make adjustments of an increase in our daily rate for our Medicaid in our nursing home, not our assisted living.
So that extra revenue is going to go into the unreserved balance at the end of the year. Uh, if, because we can't make an adjustment now to the budget, we couldn't.
No, no.
Budget less of the unreserved budget this year or, right, or.
We can only hope that.
We can only hold the depth that happens.
Yes.
Right, and besides, it's the Senate's version, which still hasn't gone through committee conference.
But this rate is not including that three percent. This is the rate minus that reduction, we budgeted off of what we were historically running.
Okay.
This increase is typically higher than you see, which really speaks to that N V S being so diligent in their coding to be able to capture it. Um, so at least for the six months that this one is active, okay, we will have that increase, not even factoring in the three percent. And that three percent was on the top three months.
That's great.
Yeah, so it's a combination of like maximizing or, or capturing all the acuity in on the cost per side, capturing all the cost.
Um, Chantel, I know your team has worked really hard with that data capture end of it, which is the.
Yeah, she has, and not to take over your turn.
No.
J J and her team are in the process of revamping all of the um, L N A documentation components to align with the new G G and kind of just bringing it to an update so we can better capture those metrics. But then it also will streamline and get rid of unnecessary capture, which will reduce the burden to our L N As at the same time.
Awesome.
It's a big undertaking, but Bridgette and J J have been working really closely around that.
Great news.
And uh, we're at the County State Finance Commission, we're also trying to keep an eye on long-term issues as far as the, um, the state initially was looking at cutting the money for uh, choices for independence uh, overall in the budget. Now that's obviously not getting the case, but um, if the state wants to delay defer institutional care, having monies from home community-based care or C F I is not the way to do it. You need to bump up the monies and bump up the rates, the Medicaid provider rates for the, that home community-based care population. Most people won't want to see that line of business.
Not in so many of the approvals.
All that too, there's, and I think there's something in the state budget about, but it's only for nursing or long-term care. About uh, two million, I believe it is, uh, by increasing the hospital tax. To be able to bring in additional monies for clearing out or fast track.
Approval for C F I and long-term care, those are clip more. So if you have C F I, it's just a change of status that we do here and they fall under long-term care cover for Medicaid. So hopefully should.
Do a, up that. So there's long-range things that we're able to get to on that committee, but the H A C, the counties are, are well represented. There's six members, uh, three of which are kind of nursing home administrators, myself and two commissioners. That's why, so we've been busy, but we won't meet again until September. Uh, we are going to have to be providing some special reports to the state um, on the next calendar year, so. Um, let's see, aside from that, busy with grants as usual, I'm soon nearing the end of the budget process. Uh, so looking forward to June eighteenth. Um, next Wednesday is when we're going to be having our year-end preparation. Um, as far as a little workshop in here at ten o'clock, also be hosting it via teams. Uh, I think first is, in teams is easier for Ben to host, um, so I'll be doing that as well. Um, and uh, I'm just going to stop there because I, so no, no ranking.
All right, um, thank you, Chuck. We're getting right to you, Chantel.
Okay, great.
Perfect transition.
Uh, so Karen, we are a hundred and thirty-eight at the nursing home, forty-seven at the assisted living. We have no outbreak numbers to present. Uh, we already talked about the Medicaid rate, so I won't talk about that. The staffing mandate that I spoke on in one of the last about how it was overturned, it was just announced that they plan to actually appeal it. Um, so C M S is looking to appeal it. Is what is kind of said, they haven't formally filed from what I've been able to see, but they expressed that they intend to fight that. So that'll be interesting to see if something actually comes from that. Uh, I will say from an impact standpoint right now, our staffing is in a place that it won't have as many ramifications where we'll start to see it as around our R N coverage. Um, so hopefully with our negotiations that'll support those. There is a conference through New Hampshire Healthcare on the tenth that some of my team is going, including some of the unit managers, which is exciting. They typically haven't gone to different training, so it'll continue to help support our residents. And the part that I'm most excited about, even though I should hate that I'm saying it, uh, is the Director of Nursing, Shabon, was actually asked to present at it. So she is um, one of the individuals presenting at New Hampshire Healthcare for the nursing component around it and the levels of care where she's worked in both psych, um, nursing homes and in the hospital setting around that. So very excited, I'll be in the crowd taking her picture and making sure it goes on our social media.
Well, that's a great, that's a really nice uh, compliment.
It's, it's wonderful, so um, very excited about that. And the other piece which I will end on is we have definitely had some shifts in different positions we've created. And this week in orientation, three of our last main physicians have all started. So our employee engagement, um, supervisor Carrie has officially started and has already jumped in and started attending meetings and, you know, had lunch with an L N A and just so excited for that. Casey, who is the, um, she has joined in for Environmental Services to help support Sam and that department has started as well. And then Tara for Clinical Education. So all three of them are just starting, they all started on Monday, but they were kind of the last three of our larger positions that um, we kind of reorganized for, but I am looking for a three-to-eleven supervisor, we have our retirement, so. Throw that out there. Anyone in the way?
Anyone in the way?
But other than that, it's been policies, systems and evaluations, and open enrollment. It's a big focus for us, that's why.
You're full of public service announcements.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chantel. Jude?
Take it up. All's well in facilities. Um, obviously we're very thrilled about EverSource's decision to go forward for us with the interconnect. We're very hopeful, I actually got an email on my way up the door this afternoon from our regular account exec at EverSource. They're coming in Monday to do that, um, actually.
To install that.
Work, yes, they're going, coming in Monday to do that, so that'll be one of the very last steps.
It's amazing.
So it is very exciting.
I mean.
We're really excited and, and just so grateful for everyone's efforts. It's important and it'll be really nice to. Think of that.
Yeah.
So.
What a difference a week wait makes.
No kidding, yeah.
We're all ready to jump off the bridge.
Kind of grand for a little bit there, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, we had our, um.
All the things were turning on, we'll, we'll be okay, they can turn off after they turn it on. So I think if we turn it off, we get the.
Objectively, we would just like to.
Right.
Turn it on in usage.
Yeah, because we don't want to have to keep buying electricity from them, but the big thing is the three million dollars for sure.
And Jude, have you heard any potential restrictions on our ability to uh, operate at hundred percent? Are they gonna, there, there's not going to be, there's no talk of restrictions to say we can only operate at fifty percent.
The system is designed to be a hundred percent of our usage. So that's kind of what it's been.
So all the new equipment they're putting in is going to cover everything we need.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Perfect, perfect.
And if there's any excess, it goes back out on the grid.
Revision was concerned that we might have to operate at a reduced rate in, in order to comply with their safety requirements. But that's been alleviated, so, but we'll go.
But that's my understanding, so it's all good. Uh, we had a big water shutdown on Monday, we had a few glitches, we didn't have as much water pressure. We had temporary water, but the pressure wasn't making it all the way to the second floor, so it was a little hairy for a little bit. But um, the guys got the work done in about four hours instead of eight, so it was a better recovery, but it was a little.
It was a Monday.
There were opportunities, as my friend.
Like opera day, they had lots of opportunities, but we came through and it was fine.
Um, let me see.
The D O P? Hmm? The D O T permit?
Yes, we got a D O T permit, we, we've got everything now except the um, the diesel tanks on the emergency generators. It's so exciting. We should see work out here, I would say, within the next two or three weeks, they want to start talking um, coordination and traffic flow and all of that stuff, they're going to do the water main replacement from the tower all the way down to start and way exit as well as all of the sidewalk work, pedestrian crossing near old admin, they're going to be completely closing off the parking lot on the facility side of the road. It's going to be a ton of work, it'll be really good to get it done. So again, it's one of these like, I can't believe we had all these opportunities under Arco, we're just going to be in such great shape when it's done. It's really exciting.
It really is, like we leverage the, these offer money to really put the county in a great place with infrastructure for, which has like tens of, decades of.
For sure.
Impacts.
Yep, it will be, for a long, long time, we'll be appreciating all of it, I'm sure.
When they do the net metering, so we're going to have net metering on all buildings, it'll just be a total of a bill and a reduction.
Oh, yes.
Other buildings have separate services.
So we, they're all, the meters are read every month. So what they'll do is they'll measure everything that we use.
Yeah.
And everything that we put out and it'll just be a delta. So theoretically, it should be the exact same amount.
Yeah.
We'll take as much off the grid as we're putting back onto it, that's, that's the plan.
Yeah.
So hopefully.
Dude, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how long it'll take to get us kind of dialed into that, maybe it goes quickly, I'm not sure, so kind of excited to see how it goes.
Great.
And the next thing will be sheep.
Sheep.
Sheep, sheep is next. And then just two other little things, if I may, um, Officer Evans has been doing a remarkable job. We had a, we bought a shed under capital for our wastewater to put big valves and et cetera away for the winter. And Evans and his guys have been up there painting it the last couple of days, they've made amazing progress, the building works terrific, they're really doing a nice job. And he's just so nice about it.
He worked out today.
Really great, yeah?
I saw he went to hug me at the jail, I got a brand-new shirt, I said, don't touch me. He was all dirty, like, don't touch me. He worked, he worked out today, or he felt worth.
They've been working really hard, they made a lot of progress.
Thank you.
I think they're grabbing A on Friday.
Fantastic.
They're bringing, hopefully if we get it in, yeah, it kind of went. But they, they should be up, if with any luck, they'll be unloading hay wagons for us on Friday, so. They're, they're huge help, they really made a big, big difference to us and they're just so nice about it and always there's even more. It's easy. We had a, we had a little um, staff appreciation cookout-y kind of thing um, in the department today. Our, our form and flipped burgers, we had one employee retiring, we had one employee leaving and one employee starting today, so there were like rounds of applause all over the place and it was just really, it was a good time, it was fun. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Jude. Jason?
Sure. Uh, one thirty-five it has today, but if I bring back my females from Carol, they one forty-seven. Uh, with that being said, there's been a lot, an uptick really, so it's a, a huge uptick in um, females being arrested and uh, quite a few of them on methanol, which I have, have to keep, so um, been a big bubble, which has been interesting, uh, but that's why we've been working on the take homes for methanol. Um, with the state, uh, uh, at M O U with uh, Prime Care and they working on it and with, with Carol and then for our new building as well. Um, and that's getting closer and closer, that's going to be very exciting to be able to uh, move some of the ladies down to the places that it, it, though they have a bit more opportunities than they have here. Uh, so that's getting close, lots of painting being done at jails, as Bishop Tom Brogdon said, we had a new dryer, um, recently just put in because the old one was just kind of, kind of gone and we had to replace money in our budget, so that's going to last us for another three, five, ten years. Uh, that, that was good. Central Square is still moving along, um, you know, we have a good team of people working on it with, with Robin. Um, Corporal Mangan uh, with the I T um, liaison has really dug in in, in his new role. Really been able to put a lot of data into that system and many other systems as well too, so it's been accelerating some of the process, which has been very helpful for Robin's team and our team and everything else, kudos there. Um, June twentieth, the superintendents and our trainers groups from the, from the around the state are going to meet at Bellnap uh, with Primex. Um, we're going to be working with Primex to create the um, Supervisor Actual Academy for corrections. So that is, as our first kickoff meeting, uh, which would be great because it really isn't, one, there's, there's supervisor trains out there, but it's not two what we actually need, so this is going to be great, Primex is actually very head again, working us, it'll be a collaboration of teaching some stuff in our end and then uh, risk liability on their end on this academy, so we're looking forward to that. And most we saw that Senate passed the retirement bill, we're still working to see what that means. Right now it says they're going to absorb all the money, um, pushing the end date out to twenty twenty-eight for people to collect all their, whether they're the twenty years and then it can get back to twenty years, but they can get the more percentages and all things in the payouts. Uh, part of that is they're hoping people the next few years will actually retire and go from fifteen hundred uh, and fifty people down to even less that would actually receive that, but that was just passed in the Senate, we'll see how it goes from there. And, and we'll see what happens in the background, there's some places I talked and there might be some money that would have to be. We don't know. It's, we're still working on that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, Alison?
Hi, I believe we hired our last open shift tech position for the moment, I'm not. Mistake. Words, that is great because we're coming into the summer months and it's super busy. Um, so that's an exciting thing and um, we'll probably do something on staff appreciation probably in about two weeks only because we want to get through open enrollment and then be able to sit, have lunch without the doorbell ringing, people coming in and out asking to use the chaos in for assistance, which is always good. Um, I am going to do a service announcement on open enrollment. We have one employee left in assisted living to get through some stuff, we have eight in county attorneys. We have eight on the second shift to D O C, seven, excuse me, on the first shift, seventeen on the second shift, five on the third shift. Um, for facilities, we have eleven people to get through, ten on the first shift, one on the second and one on the third. Um, for um, general admin, we have two long-term care people. And then for environmental services, we still have two. For weekenders, we have two on the day shift and two on the night shift that have to get through it. For long-term care nursing as a whole, seven on the first shift, three on the second and three on the third, that's really amazing because we had so many more. The sheriff's department still has two, two in dispatch and two dispatch supervisors, excuse me, they have six, so four in dispatch and two sheriffs. So we're about seventy-three percent and it closes on Monday.
Commissioner's office, I didn't hear that.
Um, Commissioner's office, we still have one opening, uh, one opening to get.
This is a public service announcement, don't be me. Okay.
To wait over the weekend, um, and then calling us in a panic Monday morning, but uh, we're there and that's why we do it, but I'm hoping. But I'm hoping the night shift, um, people come around and especially the weekend, there's the words out, um, they can access things and be, it, it literally, some, two C O's came in this afternoon right before shift and they were on the system and off the system within ten minutes.
My food, another guy went over at three.
Yeah.
It was, it's very fast if you're not changing around a lot of stuff, and most people are not. It's just those seventy-one people on the O A P plan has taken a little bit of time to get them moved over. There's a little bit more to it, but they're working their way through it. So overall, we're in good speed on that. Uh, I'm appreciative for everybody's, um, due diligence and helping us out on that. It's, it's definitely made an impact this year, because last year we weren't as far along, so I will push it out again on Friday to let everyone know where they stand, but I appreciate that. Evaluations. Uh, F Y twenty-five evaluations, the deadline is the thirteenth, June thirteenth, because payroll is, you know, we have to push it through on our side financially and then they have to push it through on their side. Um, so we're getting down to the line on those. We're watching those very carefully. We don't want to have to do retro and all of the computation that happens, because it's all manual. And then we have about four hundred or so P C N's that we're gonna be pushing out probably by the end of, uh, June, just so we can get, uh, the stuff done for open enrollment. So it's a really hectic time for us, but we, we love this time. I say it, I hope my staff says it.
I don't think your staff's saying that.
But it's great, because we're seeing people that we don't normally get to see, and there's nice conversations going on, and everybody's leaving pretty happy, so it's kind of nice.
They're so nice.
Right, they're really, really great, but thank you for that.
Thank you, Alison. Um, Kathy Stacy, I think she's, uh, uh, via phone. Kathy, do you wanna, uh?
Hello, guys?
We can hear you.
Oh, great, I'm sorry. I kept on getting disconnected. I was trying to, uh, uh, get on the meeting. I'm sorry, I missed my, um, my number seven on the agenda, but everything's going well at the office. In fact, we had a banner beginning of the month. I'm sure Chuck can tell you, we almost hit about a million dollars the first day, the transfer tax, so we're off to a good start. So other than that, everything is, uh, good, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have new business, old business.
Uh, I just, I was wondering who's gonna send the policy, uh, review over to, uh, Primex for our ninety-one.
Seen the policy. Did you get it via email? Or?
I, I, I think I did, I don't.
Okay, could you just, why don't you just share it with, with, can you just email it out to Commissioners and Leila?
Leila, you got a copy of it, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you, you, would you share it with the other commissioners? I've seen it, they haven't. And, and then they can, they can review it, and then we should move to send it get to Primex and is.
Yeah. Yes.
Did you send it over already?
No.
Oh, but you will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just let us know.
And then we'll plan to just, um, why don't we plan to put on the agenda for discussion next week, as we start launching off, if that's what's.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
That's it.
Do, do we hear anything from the adult medical daycare and adult daycare?
Oh, yeah.
So we, we count in, I believe we're waiting to confirm a time, so as soon as we have that information, um, we will bring it forward in regards to last week.
Okay, maybe they could come to the B O C meeting next weekend. Great. All right, with that, uh, then I don't do.
I do, I had to, if that's okay. Um, I'd like to give permission to do an internal posting only for the, um, substance abuse counselor.
Alison, hang on one second. Get the music, I, I already can't hear, and that music makes it worse.
I'd like, they're pretty close, so. Like to do, uh, internal posting only for a substance abuse counselor that's over in the Department of Corrections. It's more of like a succession planning. Um, and Jason can speak to that if you need to.
Yeah, so we had our, uh, Chris was there, left us a while ago, um, had two outstanding counselors. Uh, well, I should say they were, uh, case managers, one who was already in that role over in Vermont. Um, but when came inactive over there, license couldn't transfer here, um, the succession rate in that department, uh, vetted and everything else. And it'll take a couple of years, because they do thousands of hours, actually four thousand hours of observation, but, um, moving into that role, done before, so we have a very good candidate internally.
Thank you, and the last thing, I've been working with, uh, assisted living, um, they've had an employee, which is an R N um, on a per diem, uh, kind of contract with, um, per diem uh, through an agency that we've had in place since twenty-one. Uh, this individual's been with us since twenty-twenty-three. Um, we were able to negotiate a buyout for that uh, five thousand dollars, which seems reasonable, because it's an R N. Um, their buyout is more of a settlement agreement and release. I sent it to Primex, they approved it. And I don't know if the chair could sign this, because it has, it talks about an agreement, and usually the board does. And if you wouldn't mind signing it today, we can get them in the drawer and get them off of the agency.
One more, Seth.
I know.
This is for our supervisor position that's been open for.
Yeah, we started at ten. So thank you for that. That helps me out a lot, and, um.
Great news. Anything else? All right, um, public comment, so a quiet day in Zoom land. And with that, um, I will take a motion to enter into non-public for human resources, they started human resources.
They can motion one non-public and there's, uh, we have our same ninety-one, there's three, and two, A and C personnel and reputation.
Second. Yes.
I'm sure God do.
Yes.
Nigel, yes. You guys in a little while. Good evening now, we have come out of non-public and Commissioner Tombrello will make a motion relative to four non-public sessions we had.
I'll make a motion on the four items that we have, that we sealed in our public minutes, because it is determined to be that the volumes of this information would affect adversity, the reputation of any person other than a member of this board.
Seal them indefinitely.
Indifferent.
Second.
Uh, the motion to Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
Commissioner Tombro, and I vote yeah. Um, I'll take, I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
The second.
All those in favor, aye, we're so adjourned.
All right.
Have a nice evening, everyone.